Hamilton County Council, Madam Monitor, could you please note the presence of a quorum?
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Here, Madam Monitor.
Present.
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 Amy.
Present.
Here.
Thank you very much, and at this time, if we will all rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by fellow councilman Paul Ayers.
Ask you to bow your head for a moment, give you thanks to Almighty Father for the wonderful benefits you provide us here in our nation, in our county. We ask you to give us the wisdom to make good, fair, and just decisions this evening. We ask you to bless all those here, and we ask you to continue to bless all those to protect us as first responders, and especially bless and protect those that are in harm's way overseas. Take a moment to make any petitions to yourself.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before, if everyone's had a chance to read and approve the minutes of our regular session on August 1st, I would entertain a motion.
Come in.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to public comments, is there anyone from the public that would like to stand up and speak this evening? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Wendy Gamble from Cherish Center, all center advocates. I have with me our board president, Tom Dickey.
I'll just make a few introductory comments and let Wendy tell you about what we do. First of all, I want to thank you, the county supports Cherish and has for a number of years, and we really appreciate that. You know, as Wendy will tell you, it's all about focusing on the kiddos in Hamilton County. Cherry Center been interviewed there, and it's just a really important part of the system of support for kids that have been alleged to have been abused in the county, so I want you to know that. Our budget is about 70% grant-driven, just as an organization, so you get a feel for that, so through VOKA and DCS primarily, and a few other small grants. And so, the board over the last three or four years has really focused on going after the community and raising money, not just relying on those grants and the contributions from the county and from some of the cities in the county. So, we have two events each year, one's coming up called Death by Chocolate, which we'll hit you all up for, but I just wanted to let you know that the board is active, you know, out raising funds and telling our story to the community, I think is starting to resonate. People understand that even in a county as affluent and prosperous as Hamilton County, we have needs, and our kids are sort of the most vulnerable, and so we're really attacking that at the root. So with that, Wendy, I'll turn it over to you.
For all of you, I thought today the most important thing for you to understand about Cherish and what we do as your Hamilton County Child Advocacy Center is that without Cherish doing what we were doing, the county would be responsible by a federal mandate to be providing the services that we're doing. And in those services, what you would spend this year in those services absent a Child Advocacy Center would be about $700,000 to provide those same services. Because of the coordination in what we do and the additional services that we provide for kids, just for the county and those services alone, it's between $700,000 and $800,000. That doesn't include all the benefits and the things that we provide by providing therapy and medical services on our team and through our team that long-term keeps those costs down in our community for additional medical costs, mental health issues, and things like that as a precautionary measure from trauma outcomes. Hamilton County, we've had Cherish Center since 2009, and since 2009, absent the Cherish Center, the county would have spent $3.5 million on the services that we've provided over the years. We've provided child abuse investigations in collaboration with every single law enforcement agency, the Department of Family and Child, Prevail Victim Advocacy Services, our medical, our nurse practitioners, and therapists for over 2,500 families, over 2,500 kids, just for the child abuse investigations alone. What that means to the county is that we are coordinating all of these services and bringing all those services to the child. It shortens the length of time that the child investigation happens, it shortens the length of time that these kiddos will need to be seeking services, or families can access services, and hopefully it brings healing so that we don't have repeat. We do have lots of repeats, and that purpose of having that Child Advocacy Center is to reduce those repeats and to get that trauma healed so we don't have repeat victims. Have questions?
I was just asking you to repeat your name because it was so soft, I could hardly...
All right, Wendy Gamble.
Thank you, Wendy, thank you.
I was just gonna ask, how many, do you have like sister groups in other counties, or do other counties predominantly in Indiana handle it under the government?
Sister, do we provide, okay, so...
Do you have like organizations in other counties?
There are like organizations in other counties, yes. We, there are six in the state of Indiana that are accredited, we are one of those six, and there are over 17 centers. Some of them function differently than we do, some of them function out of the county, out of the prosecutor's office, some function in different ways.
What do you guys, Chaucy's Place, is that a similar organization to yours?
No. They provide prevention services.
Yeah, so let me just, I think what's happened with those, so the organization's split 10 years ago, roughly 10 years ago, is that about right? And through really just organic growth, the organizations now have really different purposes. And to summarize real briefly, Chaucy's thing about is prevention, Chaucy's place is prevention, so it's education, they're out, I mean, I don't know how many schools there are gonna be, but probably in the hundreds this year, educating kiddos and educators, and everybody has the obligation to report. Cherish gets involved really almost, generally speaking, from the moment of an allegation, and so we're on a different end of the spectrum. And then following that allegation, the child forensic interviews, and then connecting people with their children. I think of those two organizations. Now, we're complementary, where I think 10 years ago in the first split, it was, it was, who's gonna be doing a lot, but I think 10 years later, we're very complementary organizations.
Chaucy's Place, for example, if they do a prevention program at the school, and there's a child that reports at that point that they have had something that is an allegation of abuse, they will then report it, and then the process starts with us in that allegation on that end. And do you think that they're a very valuable piece, and in that stream of how we are accessing these kids and getting these kids to find out what's going on, to get them safe and to get them into services, what they do in those schools and those programs is kind of a key component in our process.
Tom, could you talk a little bit more about Death by Chocolate? What month is it typically in? How long you been doing this?
So, this will be our second one, so if you didn't hear about it last year, it's our fault, but we'll make sure you hear about it. It's a great event, it's, think of Zubilation but much smaller, and it's in the Carmel Arts and Design Center, November, I don't, fifteenth, and it's two hours, you come in, it's just lots of chocolate tears spread throughout there, some wine, and some chances to win something, I think, some silent auction kind of stuff. But that is, what we do with that money that we raise, Jeff, I appreciate you asking the question, is we really target that money towards therapeutic services, which are much harder to get grant funds for. I mean, the child forensic interviewing and that type of services sort of on our front end, if you will, there are grant funds for, it's much more difficult to line up the therapeutic services. So, two years ago, we really started focusing on raising money from the community for those therapeutic services.
Then you'll shoot us an email on it?
Pardon me?
You shoot us an email on it?
We will, thank you, yeah, thanks for asking.
He made it clear that he's coming to us at the beginning.
I know, I knew that, I did hear that.
Any other questions? Thank you guys very much for being here.
Thank you, Wendy and Tom, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Becky Terry, I'm the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club here in Noblesville, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the services we provide within our community. As many of you might know, we were born in 1951 and lived above Kirk's Hardware for a long period of time, and many of you might also know that we just had the ability to move into a new facility in January down on 17th Street. We are ecstatic to be in this new facility to provide services to children ages five to 18. We serve about 2,200 members every year, and an additional 14,000 youth come through our community service, our community center, which houses our sports activities. So, about 16,000 youth are served by our organization annually. We have a $1.2 million budget, and most of that is raised through individuals and corporations. We are also a United Way agency, but we do most of that fundraising in-house, and receive very little as far as any kind of government funding. We do receive some support from the local trustees office, and the city donated to the Capitol campaign that built that building down the road. But beyond that, we do all individual and corporate fundraising, we write grants, do special events as well, to make sure that we are able to provide what we need to, to the children here in our community. We strive to provide a high-quality program but low cost to families. We charge children $55 a year, but it costs us $555 to provide services annually for one child, so we have a large gap to make up. We do have some partnerships that help us provide some funding, Noble Manor, Greystone Court Apartments, and Lakeview Court Apartments all provide scholarships to their residents to become members of the Boys and Girls Club. So, beyond that, we also provide scholarships and reduce rates if that $55 is too much for any family. So, just in camp scholarships alone this summer, that was over $7,000 that we provided that reduced rate for. So, a lot of partnerships, a lot of activity around making sure all families have that opportunity to provide to their children. No one has ever turned away for inability to pay, so, you know, if we give them a reduced rate of $6 and they still come back and say that's not enough, we'll work with them on figuring that out. So, we really focus on impact areas of academic success, healthy lifestyles, and good character and citizenship. We provide homework help, tutoring, and STEM programming in the academic arena, health and life skills, we're focusing on physical fitness programs, even cooking clubs to teach them about nutrition, they're learning how to measure and read ingredients. And then, good character and citizenship, we have leadership clubs, and we do a lot of community service activities, especially with our teenagers, teaching them that the community is bigger than just them, and how they can make an impact and make a change in someone else's life. One focus that we have seen grow over the last 10 years is our food programming. We started a meals program probably about 10 years ago now with a partnership with Second Helpings, and we serve meals to children two nights a week, and that has grown from 30 meals one night a week to 200 meals twice a week. So, a lot of food being given out to our members. Beyond that, we do provide snack packs every Friday night, 200 snack packs go home with kids to help them with food insecurity in the home. We provide the summer food program as well as the after-school program that are funded through the federal government, but those programs, the children must qualify as a free or reduced lunch kid for us to receive reimbursement, and we do not turn any child away from any of our food programming. They don't have to be low-income, they don't have to prove that they're low-income, we want every child to have the ability to have a snack after school, whether or not the government says or their parents have the ability to pay for it or not. We don't want to label those children or have them feel any certain way. So, we have, myself and my board and our staff have made it a point that every child has the ability to eat with us in whatever program that might be. So, just last year alone, we gave out 30,590 snacks and 5,446 meals. So, again, the club is doing a lot around food programming and making sure children have what they need to eat. Key partnerships for us, the schools are a huge partnership here in Noblesville, every child has the ability to come to the club through busing. The elementary schools bus to us, and we pick up at the middle schools and the high school. The Parks Department is another great asset for us, we work very closely with them on several different projects throughout the year. We work with all the Hamilton County Youth Assistance Programs. I'm a member of the Noblesville Board, but we also work with Carmel, Fishers, Sheridan, and so on. Sheridan buses kids, their Youth Assistance Program actually buses kids to our Boys and Girls Club every day throughout the summer so that they have access to our programs. Of course, we're involved with other civic organizations, and the list goes on, because we know how important it is to partner and share resources and program to make sure our kids have what they need to become future leaders like yourselves. So, thank you very much, and I would entertain any questions.
Questions?
I just have one. What percent do you think out of 16,000 kids, that was a big number to me, are they all within the county, or is there some outside the county?
That 16,000 does include people outside the county, so we host a lot of tournaments, especially in the summer, out of the community center, and some of those children would be outside the county. Of our 2,200 members, 97% are from our county. We do see some people from outside the county during the summer or on breaks. 84% of those are Noblesville residents, and then 13% are from the other areas within the county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Very nice, thank you. Moving on in our agenda, committee and officer reports. I would like to say, Council Beaver and myself attended the Westfield River View Hospital ribbon-cutting ceremony, it was very well attended. We also took a tour, very nice, very modern, and will do very well in the Westfield area. Also, just a quick update on the morgue project, today they put in the floor, so once it dries, they will be open for business within probably a week.
I'm really excited about that.
Put your name on the list.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll put your name on that list.
There you go.
Last, I visited the jail project, it's well underway, very impressive. I met with the senior project superintendent this week, and if anybody's interested, I have a five-week outlook, and they are set to be right on time on a 3/11 of 19 finish date. So, if anybody wants, I have the gentleman's name there, it's Mike Kessler, very nice, very informative, and I would like to tell you about that project. I believe he said on 9/11 next week, they are bringing in a crane, and those cells actually go together like Legos, so they crane each individual cell in, so if anybody has an interest, he said it's really something to see, so I told him I would pass that on. Okay, on to Vice President, Mr. Beaver.
Yes, I have two things. First off, I need to, I want to make a motion to amend the agenda to put our Veteran Service Officer on tonight's agenda.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the second thing I got, I want to make a shout-out to the Noblesville Marching Millers. They were champions at the Indiana State Fair for the second year in a row. Two years in a row, best band in the state, Noblesville Marching Millers.
Very nice.
That's all I got.
Awesome.
And, I'm sorry, where on the agenda?
I don't care. It's just not on our agenda, you put it wherever you want to.
Let's just do it right now, that'd be great.
Why don't you wait till we go into official business, like new business?
We can do that as well. On our committee and officer reports, we'll move on to highway.
We met today, and I think the items will be discussed later in the agenda.
Finance.
No meeting.
And personnel. No meeting. And anything under miscellaneous?
Yeah, I just want to mention real quick, we did a event, a couple of us went to, I think we ran into some other county people as well, some people across the county, Prevail had their annual gala, Mr. Stevens was there as well, it was very well-attended, great cause. Just want to thank the people, you know, for what we do in the county, and people that attended, Amy attended as well, so, and, yeah, great event, so.
Great, thank you. Item seven on your agenda is any unfinished business. I don't think we have any unfinished business.
Mr. President, I have a question. Is the position that Brad had motioned for, the one that is tabled as the 144?
No, that's not what, that's not what I'm asking for.
Okay, so...
It is the same position though, I think, isn't it, what she's gonna tell?
No.
Okay.
I think she wants to present.
Okay.
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 I'm gonna take up that item at that budget time.
Got it, okay, so just wanted to make sure.
Exactly, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, tabled business, saying none. We do have one item, but it will stay tabled. New business, this would be the perfect spot, I believe, for Lynn to come forward, and she is with our Veteran Service Department.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me to be here tonight. My name again is Lynn Epperson, and I am the current Hamilton County Veteran Service Officer. As a county veteran service officer, it is my job to assist veterans and their families by educating them on the benefits they have earned for their service. I'm also an advocate on their behalf to improve the benefits that they have received. I will soon complete my fourth year as the Hamilton County Veteran Service Officer, but I've been a veterans advocate for over 28 years. My job is actually mandated by Indiana Code. Every county has to have a veteran service officer. The code also requires that the service officer maintain state accreditation and be an honorably discharged veteran. I'm a US Air Force veteran. In addition, I am also a National Service Officer, and I am a member of both the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers and the Indiana Veteran Service Officers Association, and I have just completed my recertification for both those. Veterans benefits, which is basically 90% of my job, includes everything from burial to disability compensation, education, healthcare, home loans, life insurance, and pensions. All of these benefits come from one of the three administrations that are under the Indiana, under the National Department of Veteran Affairs. In my office, I file what are called fully-developed claims. These claims do take a little bit longer to do, but by doing all the work upfront, when the claim is presented to the VA for processing, they're faster at processing them, and I have an 80% grant rate. Each veteran's claim can have between four and 10 different forms that must be completed for each claim. A simple disability claim for hearing loss can take anywhere from an hour. If the veteran is applying for multiple medical disabilities, those claims can take up to 50 hours to do, depending on whether I have to get medical research or medical records. During normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, I see between four and five veterans a day to start claims. It's not until after the veteran leaves my office that the work really starts. I usually have to get a DD-214 of their discharge papers, request their in-service and private medical records to support and document the claim. All of this stuff has to be requested, collected, and reviewed before I can submit the formal claim. Also, the VA is really good at pushing out new information and requiring additional training throughout the year, so I have to stay up to date with that as well. I currently have a workload of around 120 to 150 open claims rotating from month to month. Veterans who can't get into my office, if they are housebound or in the hospital, I will go to see them. I don't think that they should be denied their benefits because they can't get into the office to see me. I also work with our assisted living and nursing home facilities throughout the county, making sure that their veterans and surviving spouses receive their aid and attendant benefits to offset the cost of their care. Our office currently services veterans from World War II all the way through and up into the current and ongoing Gulf War. They range in age from their late 30s to, I'm proud to say, one of the oldest veterans I've helped to date is 102 years, two years young, he's a Marine. He lives in an assisted living facility in Fishers. My office also helps complete all the state veteran, excuse me, state veteran benefit, state veteran benefits. The disabled property tax deduction, reduced hunting and fishing, the disabled veterans' license plates. We also assist veterans, if they are in a financial crisis, they can get a one-time grant of $2,500 from the state of Indiana. Hamilton County is the fifth-largest veterans population in the state, we have a little over 14,000 veterans in the county. The other counties are Marion County, Lake County, Allen County, and St. Joseph's County. Those last three are all up north, so basically I'm working with mostly Marion County. Of all the other counties except Marion, they both have a full-time county service officer as well as an assistant county veteran service officer, and two of them even have part-time administrative assistants. I was an office of one up until March of last year when I was granted an administrative assistant. She is constantly kept busy, we average around 400 phone calls a month. When I started in December of 2014, veterans here in Hamilton County were receiving $39,63,000 in disability and compensation benefits. As of last year in 2017, that total is now $48,691,000 for an overall increase of $9,280,000 in benefits in just under four years since I started. Although I am a full-time employee of the county, I also spend hundreds... Although I am a full-time employee of the county, I also spend hundreds of hours of my own personal time to make sure that the veterans and their families are receiving their benefits. The Department of Veteran Affairs forecasts show that there are even more veterans that will be discharging out of the military over the next 10 years with an anticipated 5% increase in just female veterans, and that's a trend I've already started seeing in my own office. I will need help to keep serving the veterans of Hamilton County and make sure that they receive the benefits they have earned for their service in a timely manner. Finally, I am honored to hold the position of the Hamilton County Veteran Service Officer. For me, this is not just a job. It's, being a veterans advocate has been and will continue to be my passion, and I ask the council for support in my request. Does anyone have any questions?
I just quickly on the number, you said 400 calls a month, so you're at 20 calls a day?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, why is that? You got to educate me a little bit. I'm in sales, so that's 2.5 calls an hour, so, you know, that's, I mean, are they long calls?
They're usually long calls. Veterans are calling in, asking either questions, basic questions, what are my benefits, or they're asking us to follow up on their claim, or they're calling and giving us information. Calls can go anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes.
And you're looking, besides that, you have four to five appointments a day, correct?
Yes.
You said in, there's 14,000, approximately 14,000?
Yes, sir.
Veterans right now in the county. In 2014, do you know roughly what there was? The reason I'm asking is because I know in a lot, especially in the southern section of the county, there's a lot of big building of age-restricted communities. One by my house, it's going to be 1,800 homes, age-restricted, once it's built out, del web. I'm just curious, do you know what it was in 2014, and do you have a projection of maybe in 2020, how many veterans might be in the county?
No, I do not. I do not have those figures.
I was just curious what the growth was, the number of veterans.
They're saying that there's going to be an overall 10% increase in the veteran population retiring out of the military, so.
And that would be, I know that would be anywhere, but I just know probably Hamilton County, a lot of people moving here, it's growing, it's going to be more than 10%.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Yeah. Most places, first of all, I'm a veteran, a Marine Corps veteran, so I'm not looking for, to.
Why not? You're a veteran.
Yeah. Well, my question is, in most places that I've gone, military and outside of the military, if you go someplace, you're supposed to be helped by that, the office that is in charge. So in other words, I don't understand Marion County being able to slough off qualified veterans, just, shouldn't they have to go back there, or am I not understanding?
They should, but Marion County, for the last three years, Marion County did not have any veteran service officer whatsoever. They did hire one gentleman. He now does most of the mayor's representation at veterans events. He is only in the, you have to call him to schedule an appointment, and most of the time, he's not available. So they're told if they want to get their benefits, they need to go to one of the Donut Service Officers, which is the five surrounding counties around Marion County.
Thank you.
Lynn, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm very supportive of veterans, you know, I have veterans in my family, so I'm not looking for a fight or anything, but I've heard county attorney Mike Howard many times say differences in our activities, our duties. By statute, some say shall, some say may.
Mm-hmm.
And when you started, you indicated that it was mandatory that a county have a veteran service officer?
Yes, Indiana state statute requires that every county in the state have a veteran service officer. There are actually five in the state right now that do not have active county veteran service officers. That is something that will be addressed at the General Assembly next year.
Okay. Because I'm looking at the statute, and it says, "May appoint a county veteran service officer." I see Code 101719, so I didn't know if you have a newer IC code that says they must, because what we've always been under the interpretation, and I believe the council, we instituted the $500 burial benefit, is that it's voluntary. It's not something that's mandatory.
That's not what I've been told. I mean, when I go down to this, that's what, when I went down to the State House, that's what I was told, and when I go to veterans meetings, that's, that's what we're pushing for. Every, the Veterans Association is, we are, every county is mandated to have one, and they're actually talking about penalties that can be imposed on the counties that don't have them.
You have an additional, because again.
I'll look, I'll find it, and I'll, and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a couple of questions, Lynn. So, like Rick said, we've always been really, even before you got here, supportive and raised the burial stipend that the county gives.
We are the highest paid county in the state.
You mean as far as what we pay?
Burial, yes. Most other counties only pay $100.
Yeah, that's not by accident.
Mm-hmm.
So obviously, the penalty for not having a veteran service officer is not very high, is it?
Currently, no.
No, Marion County ain't had one.
Mm-hmm.
Let me ask you this. Now, the way I understand it, the only benefit that the county pays for is the stipend we give to help bury them.
And $100 to place the military marker on their grave, yes.
So that we help with the burial and the marker. So really, what you're doing as our county employee and your part-time assistant is helping the veterans get their state and federal benefits.
Correct.
So they've passed that responsibility down to the county.
The Indiana General Assembly, yes.
Are there state or federal veteran service officers available?
Well, there are representatives down at the Indianapolis Regional Office that can assist. If they have staffing, right now, they don't have staff. They don't, they can't even process claims in less than 120 days, so.
It would be, would it be right to say that, that we're doing more than anybody else?
As far as providing services to your, to the veterans?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I mean, we're providing you as, as an employee and your part-time help to help the veterans, which we all want to do, get.
Their benefits, yes.
From other levels of government.
Correct.
Lynn, I have one more question.
Mm-hmm.
And you're doing a great job, no doubt about it, for the county and the veterans. Do you know if any city has a veteran service officer?
Not that I'm aware of in the state of Indiana. Well, everyone that is a member of the Indiana County Veteran Service Officer is a county service officer. I don't know any cities that have them.
Because the same IC code I referenced indicates that mayors, so we have four mayors, four cities in the county, they can also.
They could, yes.
And designate it. So if they would do that, that would help take the load off you.
Yes.
So maybe that's something to mull about, or maybe have publicized, that the cities could maybe step up, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
I get one quick question, and this came from a question that he asked over there. Two points, you got a couple of calls an hour, 20 calls a day. Out of those calls, are any of those Marion County calls? Because he said you're taking some Marion County stuff, and so do you know a percentage of that, or how much of that would be from people that are outside of our county?
I can't track that. I can only track the number of incoming calls that we get on our 9610 number.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Lynn, I got one more question.
And I've got, and I currently manage 21 Marion County employee, 21 Marion County veterans, case files that I currently manage.
Okay.
On your form you passed out, what does comp and what does pension reference? Is that the number?
Disability compensation that is paid and pension.
And are these a number of individuals, veterans, that you're helping, or is this a dollar amount? That's what I'm not sure.
That's the dollar amount. It's the number of people that are receiving those benefits, and then under, under GDX, EXP, that's the total amount that is paid according to the federal government to those people for benefits.
For example, last year, is it 2,768 veterans in the county?
In Hamilton County that we're receiving.
And 120 on pension?
Pension. Most people can't live in, in Hamilton County on the pension. You have to make $13,000 or less, and you just can't live here on that.
You're confusing me.
Pension, veterans pension is $13,000. That's what the VA will pay for pension. But a lot of, a lot of.
I'm confused, because, I mean, I know officers that are getting a lot more than $13,000 a year.
You're talking about pension, though.
Pension, VA pension.
VA pension, okay.
VA pension, yes.
Okay.
You have to, that's about all you get, too.
That's all you get, yes.
You can't, you can't be getting Medicare, this is the way I understand, Medicare, Social Security.
Okay.
Nothing. You have to give, you can only be making 13 grand a year. That's the way I kind of understand it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lynn?
Thank you.
Just want to thank you for your.
And I'll look up that statute and let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to new business, we'll go to item A, which is the approval of vendor claims.
So moved. Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion on the vendor claims? Seeing none. All those signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Also in front of us is a Resolution 09-05-18-01. It's a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the 276th Street Phase II Improvement Project. Make the motion to approve?
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking through our agenda. Maybe Rick, you can, is, is item E under the public, public hearing, is that the only other highway business on tonight's agenda?
Uh, looks like it.
I'll wait till then. I got some highway questions, but I want to bog down the meeting. I'll bring it up under E, okay? All right.
Okay.
Okay, and moving on, in your packet this past week, it includes the 2019 council meeting dates. Is, are there any questions? Everybody get a copy.
Look at them. They've changed.
Big, big changes.
Lot of red.
And thank you for putting that together for us.
We appreciate that.
Okay, now we're moving on to the item D, which is.
Steve, we would like these adopted.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We will have meeting dates.
Do I have to?
Item D is vacancy backfill, bookkeeping.
So moved.
Do you want to take all three of those, one, two, and three?
Yep.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on those? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. All right, page two of your agenda. This time, I will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Will include additional appropriation, 144 amendments, transfers and reductions. Item A is assessor. There's a 144 amendment with title changes, and item two is a reclassification of administrative deputy to field appraiser.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question. Robin, does this have any financial impact to us?
He's like, you had to make me get up. Look at her.
See how happy she is?
Up, class training, updating job descriptions. The second one is taking a vacant position and moving it to a field appraiser, and I will need to transfer $11,110 to that field for 18. That's, that's also no additional. I've got the money.
That's all the impact?
Yes.
Thank you.
So are we voting on aye and aye aye?
Yes.
Yes. Any further questions for Robin? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Item two is a clerk transfer for $2,500.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Hey, buildings and grounds, there's a request for transfer for $85,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
You want to have Steve come up and talk about his reports, or is that in the, is that in the agenda?
I don't have that in the agenda anywhere else. Now would be a great time.
Okay, Steve.
Steve, word reports are usually about that thick.
I have tried to learn, okay, tried to get them in there. So first of all, there's two project status. The one's Public Safety Complex, which is a solar project, LED lighting, and the other is the jail, and I attached pictures with both of them for you, that at least gets you an update of where everything is at. And then, of course, I have the two transfers. Obviously, you're aware of how the winter was, really cold, and how the summer was really hot, and our equipment we have is getting to age, and we're having some issues, so we're working through that. This transfer helps just to ensure that we can make it through the year. Do you have any questions for me about the projects?
I especially like these two sunset pictures. Very nice, guys.
Those sunset pictures, we came at 2:00 in the morning, shut the power down, the jail complex, got the generator up running to, as we did the transfers, as the sun was coming up, I was able to get those pictures.
So that was sunrise pictures?
Sunrise pictures.
My, I'm sorry for that.
They're early waking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem to surprise me with you.
Again, I appreciate all of your support. If you have any questions or like to see anything, please let me know.
I want to, I want to be on the informed when this thing happens that Councilman Schwartz here talked about when they dropped those pods in.
Yes. So I'll tell you what I do. So I have a meeting tomorrow with them. I'll get the timeframe of each drop. So we're going to be staggering these trailers at the, at the, at the fairgrounds, these semis, and we're going to bring them in periodically to unload them, because as they unload them, they have to set them in place. So instead of having semi stacked on 37 or by the school, the school traffic, we're staggering those there. I will get the timeframes, the spread, and I will email all of you and let you know and have you guys out there, and I will have some hard hats for you and ready to go in to see this, because it will be impressive.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
But I have, I have one more question. I was noticing, because you know I go up and down 37 about 10 times a day. What's the plan for mowing?
So if you go by there today, you're going to see that it's taken care of.
Well, I mean.
Okay, so what our plan is, is we're able to spray underneath, just underneath those, and the width of them is designed to fit our 72-inch mowers down them, two passes down them. So now, where we were bringing the big tractor over to mow the whole field, now we just bring the mowing crew over every two weeks to mow. So we're just getting that cycle, because it's still rough, it's still grating some stuff out, but on the 24th, we will be having the final ceremony there. We would like to see all of you there to sign it and put the last solar panel, we'll take it off and put it back on, and have that.
So the plan is just actual spray underneath it?
Correct. I did not want to waste money if it rocks and still have to spray, so we can handle it this way.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Mr. McKinney, I saw you had your hand up also.
Well, I just had a question. The roof is on the building.
Correct.
So how do they drop these cells in with a crane?
So they actually go inside to set them in a crane.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we have one big opening that's there now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's how they transport them in.
Okay.
I just saw your project status report on the jail. I guess I stole some of your thunder there.
That's fine, I'm good with that.
But you do, again, have some great pictures, so.
Well, those pictures, so Mike Kessler, who's on job site there.
Yes.
I request pictures from him every week. So as I go out there, then he sends me, so we have the file of everything that's going on, and we keep updating, even if we're not out there for an inspection, or anything, we have a, we have a picture of the process, so we have it on file in case there's an issue. And you, Rick's been down there and seen the big files I have, and I've obviously mentioned paper, and that's why.
Have no equal.
No, I have a lot of them.
Do you have any idea what time on the 24th?
I will, as soon as, they're going to start it in the morning. It'll spread out through the day.
Okay.
The 24th, sorry.
4:00, 4:00 on the 24th.
Okay, so it's not September 11th, it's.
That's next, no, that's the south. The solar panels is the 24th.
Solar panels, the 24th. We'll start setting the pods on the 11th.
Got it.
Send us an email.
I will send you an email. That's why I said I'll send you an email.
Thank you, boss. Appreciate it.
Make sure I get it right.
And again, if you all want to go and watch those pods get in place, he is in the work trailer that's on site at the jail.
Correct, Mike is. We'll make those arrangements. We'll have hard hats there for you, and we'll set the times up, and more than welcome to come in and walk the whole property.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We vote on that, 85,000?
That is a good question. We had a motion, a second. We had a motion, a second.
We have not voted.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Moving on, there's Sheriff with a 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item B, it's the Airport Capital Fund, they're requesting $65,000. The amount available for additional appropriations is $686,505.
I think I'll have Mr. Cozak come up here and talk to him.
So moved.
He's one of the few department heads that actually wants to come to a county council meeting, can you believe it?
Well, good evening, thank you for being here.
Thank you for the introduction, I guess. This is, simply put, is a project to take a current, a parking lot that is currently gravel, is our overflow lot, is used more and more frequently as our paved lot fills up. The good news on it is, as I said, it's already gravel, so it's taking advantage of, of infrastructure that's already there, and putting three inches of asphalt over top of it.
65 grand for that?
It is, unfortunately, we got back the quotes yesterday, they came in higher than that, so we're gonna be able to take some things out, we, we asked for them to provide quotes for some additional items as well, we can take those off, and we will be able to meet, we believe, that 65,000. The challenge right now, we're finding, is we requested five quotes, we received only two back, right now, there's such a demand for asphalt, that they're just too busy, they're, they're not hungry enough for the work, is what our engineer keeps telling us, and we continue to find that in other projects as well.
Any further questions? Saying none.
Thanks, Brad.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brad.
It's actually the construction lot, when they built X hangar.
Ah, okay.
That's where the gravel lot used to be.
I understand now. Moving on to item C, it's a communal capital development, and it's a transfer for $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is an immunization grant, it's a transfer for $36.92. Mr. Berry is here, does anybody want to?
So moved.
Yeah, seconded.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's, that's, the form's gonna cost.
Yeah, this is paper, we killed that much paper.
The highway or federal?
Yes, it's a reimbursement fund, they're requesting $77,837. The amount available for appropriation is $188,652.
So moved.
Second.
Brad, you had discussion on this?
No, not on this item, go ahead and vote on this.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on...
I had a highway question, I kind of got, got some, some insight, or some insight that the Logan Street project is, bids come in high, highway committee.
We talked about that briefly today, and I think it was discussed earlier, I thought we had already, but I'll let Brad, I asked Brad Davis to come up and address that, that we had appropriated or asked for more money, and Noblesville's gonna share in the 50%, but, Brad, would you want to come up and confirm that?
Logan Street project, they came in higher than our engineer's estimate by, I don't remember exactly, by a million two, a million three?
Over?
Over our engineer's estimate. We went back and reviewed everything, and we found out really that our engineer's estimate was quite low, and so, the contractors are actually building probably appropriately, so we reconfigured the second time we went out for bids, we rejected it the first time, went out the second time for bids, we broke it apart, and had a bridge contractor bid on the bridge portion, and we broke out the electrical lighting work separately, so we could have commercial electric, electrical companies bid on that, and we got bids back on both of those, and we've awarded those, and the contractor's gonna be starting, but the combination of those, two bids from the electric contractor and the bridge contractor, approximated the same bid that we got earlier.
Which was a million over?
Yes.
And where's that million dollars coming from?
Uh, it's been appropriated, and I believe it's out of Major Bridge Fund.
Well, I, I missed one month out of 22 years, did I miss it that month?
Probably.
It was before that.
Yeah.
It was, I thought it was earlier in the year that we did it.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact date.
I believe it was in March when we committed to it. I think it was March.
So, where'd we get the money?
I, I believe it's out of Major Bridge Fund, and Noblesville is adding up additional funds as well, to cover a portion.
And each one is half?
I don't remember if it's half or not, I think it was an additional 400,000, if I remember right.
I thought they...
We probably rated that based upon the bridge project, we're paying for the rehab of the bridge, the widening of the bridge is being split, and the lighting costs are being split, so it's, it's not half, but it's proportionate. I think we're all good to go.
Thank you.
Finance?
Our budget hearings, yeah.
Okay, moving on, item F, it's Court Retentiveness Reduction Grant, it's a transfer of $1,821.23, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
The discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Pre-trial supervision grant, there's a transfer for $6,255.71. Is there a motion?
I have a question, go, yeah, so moved.
Second.
Wait, I have a question, a second. Go ahead, Paul.
All right, yeah, so, does this program end? I know we're ordered to do, to do this, do you know, Chris, does this program end? Weren't we ordered by the court to do this as a trial?
Seems like this lady may know what she's doing.
Oh, okay, thanks, thank you.
Good evening, Stephanie, thanks for coming.
What I'm asking for, first of all, is the 6,255.71, this is leftover grant money that we're allowed to keep, so I'm just asking to move it into another...
I have no objection, I'm just a question.
Sure, so you were asking about if this is, we are part of, Hamilton County is a pilot county
Right.
In Indiana for pre-trial reform. We don't see this ending.
Okay.
We are doing well, I don't know if you were able to see in the paper last week, there was an article on the front page of the Indy Star highlighting what the work is being done here in Hamilton County. Being looked at as a model for the state right now, in pre-trial reform.
Yeah, that was, just my question is, because it was, you know, kind of thrown on us by order that I, it, but there's no timeframe, you think it'll just continue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, question, knowing next spring is a budget year for the state, do you expect that they will go forward with this on more of a permanent basis, with other counties also?
We hope so, right now, we're receiving funding from the Indiana Supreme Court and the Department of Correction, and we hope to continue that funding, we have to apply every year for that, I don't foresee that going away.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Stephanie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.